The meeting of the Select Board on April 26. As Chairman of the Barrington Select Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing Microsoft Teams for this electronic meeting. All members of the Select Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during the meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in this meeting. You may participate by phone participation by dialing 603-664-0240 and entering conference ID You may participate by video, by viewing the link that's on the site, or by typing in bit.ly/barrsb. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Microsoft Teams, phone or video. Instructions have also been provided on the website of the town at www.barrington.nh.gov. And, okay, I was just saying, I've got somebody.
I think I fixed it.
All right, thank you. Where was I here? If anybody has a problem, please dial 603-664-0146 or email administration@barrington.nh.gov. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during the meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let us start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance where each member states their presence. Please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law.
Daniel Air, I am at 3:34 Old Conker Turnpike. There is no one here influencing my vote.
George Bailey, 19 Chesley Drive. My wife is located downstairs. I'm upstairs in the office. There's nobody here to influence my vote.
Dan Mantrek, 353 Scruton Pond Road. I'm in the dining room alone. My wife is in the house, but she's not close and will not influence my vote.
And I have not seen Jim yet unless he is one of the other numbers on the list, so.
I've been texting him, he's still working on pulling it up.
Okay, so Andrew Knapp, 96 Easy Point Road. I am the only one in the office. There are other folks in my house at this time, though. So I think we're good. If everyone would please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So we will start this evening's meeting with a public hearing for the issuance of a building permit on Flower Drive, a private road for Matthew and Susan Cornuth, map 112 lot 20. And I will open it to the board for commentary.
I think the, I think the only thing that was raised by the Planning Board and the department heads should be contingent, grading the flower road, restoring the ditch line, street number at the end of the driveway prior to construction. And I believe they're in the process of joining the local road association.
Any other commentary from the board, George?
Thank you very much. I've had a chance to review this. The only thing I see missing is a plot plan for the new house they plan on constructing after they demolished the current house. And the other piece that I have concern with is that after they demolished the current house and put the other new house there, that makes it a lot more non-conforming, which is an issue with me and I hope with other people for their consideration.
So do you want to elaborate a little more on that, John? Because I know that didn't come up with the Planning Board. Or I'm sorry, I'm saying John, George.
Yeah, well, one of the things is right now is that the current house is on, is located on .7 acres and the current square footage is 1,360 square feet of the current house that they want to remove. And then the house they want to put in there will have a square footage of 1,560, which will make the house bigger than the lot they're on. As you know, with a .7 acres on that house, it is, that's, was built on a non-conforming lot because there's a lot of record. And now when they tear down this house and put something larger there, it makes it a lot more non-conforming. And our zoning regulations seem to have a notice on there to not allow to change the property, become more non-conforming with this. I know this is not the ZBA, but I just thought of bringing it up your attention.
Right, but they're not expanding the footprint is the way I take that. They're just expanding the height of the property.
As it may, that was my comments that I made, and I still think it makes it a little bit bigger.
Well, I wouldn't disagree with you. It creates more usable space.
Yes, I understand that, Mr. Chairman. But also, there is, there is not a plot plan with this to show us what's going on at all. There is a tax map that is there, very nice. And we have the current layout of the, of the plan for the other house they want to put in. And the only plot plan that's there is the one for the septic system. But that's so minute, it makes somebody my age awful tough to turn around and try to read that. So that's what I have on it. But there isn't anything to show us anything else on there. And you know, that's my comments I made on it, and I'm not here. I'm only one person that's making these comments, and so that's what I'm doing with it.
I'm just, I feel like we've had a lot that have come before us where we have not approved them with plot plans. Is that?
Well, so the requirement requires the, it to show the location and size of the lot, the location of all proposed structures and the location length of the driveway in relationship to the access road. I think Mr. Bailey has expressed previously that he would prefer to see that requirement of a plot plan be more comprehensive. Sometimes it's hand drawn, sometimes it's on the tax map, sometimes it's part of the septic plan. So, you know, I think the information that's required by the board's existing policy is provided. You know, I understand his concern about the size of the scan for this septic plan. But I believe the information's available. But I think something the board should consider when reviewing the Classics and Private Road policy is addressing concerns of the select person Bailey has brought up.
Yep, I mean, I see where the old structure was on the plot plan, the septic disposal plan. And I see where the new structure is located on it.
Right.
Is that what you're looking for, George? Or are you really looking for like a larger?
The, the plan that they sent out, Andy, is that was, that was completed on January 14th, 21. And this is also for the septic plan. And everything else that's on the septic plan, it makes it very difficult, as Connor had mentioned, that I have spoken to this before. And I just think that if you can look at it two ways. You can look at this and say, well, gee, that's an awful lot of amount of information they've given us by submitting the plan, the, as they call it, for the sewage disposal system. But then if you look at it from my standpoint, you look at it and you say, gee, this is not a very clear drawing, even though it is precise, I will say that, but it's not very informative when you have to turn around and figure out how to blow it up. And then when you blow it up, a lot of your letters are kind of blurred or they're not legible, so you can identify with it. And that's, that's what I'm getting at. I mean, other than that, there is anything else on it except for the confirmation, you know, conforming the plan. But we don't know that because we don't have a drawing to show that, except when you look at the square footage of the house and how it increases, so you go from there.
So if I make a recommendation. Yes, two, two things. One, as far as the requirements for the plot plan, my recommendation would be that the board consider expanding that section of the policy during an upcoming revision to make sure, because I think it's, it's hard to articulate that that information is not included in the submitted materials. As far as the zoning requirements, that's also something we've talked about before. I mean, the, the role of the Building Inspector and Zoning Administrator is to make sure that the, the building activities conform. That's not part of this process. That's a separate process which happens with every building permit application. And so the, that, if there's concerns about conforming with existing zoning, that's handled in a separate process. That's not what we're here for. One of the things we did talk about and have done that Mr. Bailey had asked for previously was if they received relief from zoning, that that information be included in the packet just for information purposes only. So we, we have done that previously. But the, the review of zoning compliance is part of the review of the building permit separate from the Select Board's Classics and Private Road Agreement. So for number one, review during the next policy revision. And for the zoning, let that happen with the established process.
Let me just go on what Connor was saying. Item three on the document checklist that we have for private road requests for building permit. Item three is copy of plot plan showing location, size of lot, location of all proposal structures. It's in the plan for them to submit that with it, and it's not being submitted with it. So that's all, Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to get in a contest with this because I have a tendency to lose a lot of these contests. And it's, I don't want to have another one with anybody. So that's where we're at with this here right now. I just gave you my comments, and I just think that.
So.
The rules are already there for them to go along with it. They're not doing it, so that's it.
So my, my general commentary on it is, I think, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask them to verify that a plot plan has been submitted and is on file with the town. The other piece that I look at, as I look at the prior location of the house and the new location of the house, the new location of the house is further back than the other one. So they're, they're actually becoming less non-conforming.
With a distance to the water, correct.
And with an upgraded sewage disposal system and the fact that they're, you know, they meet all the setbacks from their well. So the property as a whole is less non-conforming than where it started. Does everyone agree with that consensus?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
I'm only one of five, I realize that.
Yep. So I don't have a problem approving it conditionally with the fact that we ask for a plot plan to be, make sure a plot plan is on file with the town. Dan, you have your hand up?
Yeah, well, I understand what George's confusion is of. But basically, the engineered plan for the septic is like a plot plan, but I cannot read it. And then too, my fine, I see lines, they meet the setbacks, they move it back and stuff. They seem to make it work, but these drawings I can't read either. So if I come out, I just have to blow it up on the computer. But basically, looking at the paper, I can't read them. My magnifying glass, I can't read it. But I think it's okay if it's right. But George is right, we need to go back and have it certified in a plot plan because there's so many houses in town, the foundation's in the wrong place. So that checks some balance. I agree with George.
Which is, which part of it? What are you agreeing with? The idea that we need to have a.
We can accept this, but we got to go out and make sure they verify they put it in the right spot. Certification, and then maybe when life gets better, when we're not in COVID, we can have bigger plans submitted, 11 by 17 or at least, so we can read them.
So are you saying you don't want to approve this?
I'll prove it. But I'm just saying, it is a tight law. It looks like everything works with my magnifying glass. But in the future, I wouldn't mind seeing, having 11 by 17s, I can read it.
So here, here's my suggestion, and you guys can tell me if you agree with it, that it goes, that we, that we can, that we punt this essentially to John or to the, to the code enforcement officer to review it, validate that all the documents that we require have been submitted and it's conditionally approved on that basis. Does that make sense to everybody?
With that statement you made about the documents being there, that makes it easier for me to turn around and approve it. Provided John does that, then I'm happy with it.
Okay, Dan Air?
No.
Then I'll get to you, Danan.
All right, I'm sorry.
Yep, Dan, go ahead.
No, I thought I loaded my hand.
No, I had put it down the first time. Let me put it back up. All right, go ahead, Danan.
No, I was going to say, it, I don't, it says septic on this. If you just relabel it to say plot plan, then we'd have the information. I'm not sure that that's worth arguing. I think it's a good point that, that both Dan and George make that it might be better if it was a little more legible. But I don't know that we ought to be picking on what the name of this piece of paper is, frankly.
Go ahead, George.
Thank you very much. Dan, I've got to tell you that over the, over the years, we have had individuals submit drawings like the one that we have for a plot plan that sometimes is not very legible to use. And then when we've come back to it, and not necessarily with John as the, the inspector, but to some before him, and they said, whoa, that's what we meant, no, that's what we said. So we have turned around, we, the ZBA has said, look, we need to have a, a clear and precise plan. And that's just something that I've carried over when I look at this plan here. Now, as long as what the Chair has said about having John turn around and have, to ensure that all those documents are there, it's there. But to turn around and take one document, like you're saying, and changing it over, it does get difficult, and it doesn't have all the stuff that we need on it. So that's why I say it's best to have a clear and precise drawing, so there's, there is no question when it comes for discussion later on. And that's all, that's why I push to have a clear and precise drawing with it. So I hope, I hope that helps a little bit on your feelings towards this.
So I'm willing to make a motion to approve the issuance of a building permit on Flower Drive for Matthew and Susan, Susan Cornuth, map 112 lot 20, with, with the conditions noted by the department heads as well as final approval by John Huckins that all of the requirements that the Select Board has in place have been upheld.
I'll second that.
Okay, so I have a, I made the motion, it's seconded by select person Air. Roll call vote.
Air, I.
Bailey, I.
Mantrek, I.
And Knapp, I.
Sakosha.
Oh!
He's back.
Where is he?
I'm right here.
Yeah, I can't see on my screen, I got to add you in here. All right, there we are. Now I got you pinned, so I got everybody here. Ooh, you're on the beach, very lovely.
That's right.
All right, so we had a, we had a full roll call vote of the entire board. Everyone is on, on board now with it. All right, moving on to appointments. We have the swearing in of our new police officer, Henry Resnachek. Is George, is George Joy on?
I believe we should have audio and video now, yes?
Yes.
Oh, hold on, let me pin you as well here. Gotcha, okay.
So I have Mr. Resnachek here. Henry was officially hired on March 29th, 2021. His first official day of work was April 19th. Mr. Resnachek completed the physical fitness test April 21st, and will begin the full-time police academy on the 3rd. Henry's one of five applicants who started the hiring process back in February to backfill Officer Seaworth's position. Born and raised in the seacoast, he's a graduate of Malden Catholic, been living and working in Lee and taking night classes towards a criminal justice degree, which will be basically making sure he finishes after he graduates the academy. So great work ethic, good young man, good solid addition to the police force.
Very good. And so I will be doing your swearing in. If you would repeat after me. I, Henry Resnachek, do solemnly swear, do solemnly and sincerely swear, sorry.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
And affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all duties.
And affirm that I will faithfully and honorably discharge all duties.
And impartially discharge and perform all duties.
Impartially discharge and perform all duties.
Incumbent upon me as a police officer.
Incumbent upon me as a police officer.
For the town of Barrington, New Hampshire.
For the town of Barrington, New Hampshire.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
Of this constitution of the law of the state of New Hampshire.
The state of New Hampshire.
This I, I do under the pains and penalties of perjury.
This I do under the pains, penalties, and perjury.
Very good, and welcome to the Barrington Police Force.
Now, I actually had the pleasure of sitting on the police board while Henry was one of the applicants. So very, very pleased to see the decision.
All righty, very good. Bear with me as I just clean up my screen a little here. The next item I have is the municipal, the proclamation for Municipal Clerks Week, which will be May 2nd through the 8th. Whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of the government at other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. Whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. Whereas municipal clerks continually serve to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Municipal Clerk throughout participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, county, and professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishment, accomplishments of the Office of the Municipal Clerk. Now, therefore, we, the Select Board of Barrington, do recognize the week of May 2nd through May 8th, 2021, as Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, Kimberly Kearns, or, I do that all the time, Karakas, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. One of the, I apologize, Kimberly, one of these days I will get it right. All righty. So first of two public comments. Just a reminder, if you would, please raise your hand, star six to unmute. And we will give it a couple minutes just to see if anyone has anything. Danan?
Oh, are we supposed to vote on this proclamation, by the way?
It's ceremonial, you can.
I just.
I think it would be appropriate.
Did I have it down as a vote? I guess I did, I apologize. So if we would, let's finish up the public comment, and we'll come back around to that since we're, since I went charging ahead at breakneck speed here.
If you're participating on a computer, you can raise your hand or use the chat feature. If you're participating on your phone, you'd have to press star six to unmute yourself. And you can just speak up and let us know you'd like to speak. I have a hand up from Chief Joy.
All right, Chief Joy?
Thank you, actually, this involves Chairman Knapp. Would like to thank Chairman Knapp as a citizen of the town of Barrington rather than as a representative of the town of Barrington, and TurboCam for their assistance recently getting a very large safe out of our evidence room that needed to come out to make life a lot easier for the evidence techs. So when called, they were there with the correct equipment to not damage any of my employees and get it out safely. So thank you very much.
Awesome.
Glad we could help, thank you.
I do not see anything coming through on my side, Chair Knapp.
All right, I think we've been long enough. So I will close public comment, and I will circle back around to the proclamation for Municipal Clerks Week and ask for a roll call vote.
Air, I.
Bailey, I.
Mantrek, I.
Jim is frozen.
Sakosha.
Oh, there we go. And I, and I will vote I, and I will have, just for official record, made them, Danan made the motion to vote on it, I second that, is that acceptable?
Perfect.
All right, thank you. See, I'm going to get this right one way or another here. All right. Review of minutes, the minutes from 4:12 of 2021. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There is one adjustment.
Yep, I was going to say, I have Tiffany's hand up. Tiffany, if you would like to comment before we vote on the minutes?
Yes, on page seven, there is a paragraph that was from the previous meeting, that's been deleted. There's also, since that was noticed, I caught that I did not include the title for actually Chair Person Knapp in one area of the minutes, so that's been corrected as well.
Well, you did better than me because I read them and I clearly didn't see it. Danan?
She's incredible taking these notes, so I love to find little, little nits to pick. It's just amazing that she does. But on page three of the thing, there's two buys. I think it's page three, let me go back and check. Somewhere in here. There are, there are two, what, what did I do with it? Anyway, there's a buy and a buy. I don't think that's worth complaining about.
I will do a search and I'll get that fixed in the final as well.
Sorry, you're incredible, the job you do, it's amazing, thank you.
All right, so I, so I had a motion to approve that I believe Danan had made, and Dan seconded.
I think it was George made it.
Okay, George, George made it, and then Dan Air seconded it. Roll call vote.
Air, I.
Bailey, I.
Mantrek, I.
Sakosha.
And Knapp, I, with the note. And NAP I with the noted corrections as identified. All right. Staff reports.
Yes, thank you, I don't have anything that is not an agenda item.
Municipal Office Administrator Cottle?
In signature, we have the meeting minutes that were just approved with the changes. I'll have those to you by the Municipal Clerks Week proclamation, that will also be a digital signature. Kim has agreed that it does not need to be a physical signature this time around. The private road agreement that was just approved and previously submitted still out for signature are one oath of office and one abatement denial, that's it.
I need what signatures?
We don't need any right now.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on under Old Business 2021 Line Striping Awards.
Yes, so we opened the bids this afternoon, they were due at noon today. We received four bids, the information is available on the town's website at the link in the report. The apparent low bidder is Industrial Traffic Lines, and I closed out of the amount, it's $34,000 and some change. That is the recommended organization. We've worked with them successfully in the past, and they are the low bidder. The road agent has reviewed their proposals and agrees.
Motion to approve, Dan?
What's the amount on the line item? I thought it was right around 30 grand? For that line item?
So we, yeah, it's, it's, that's within the approved budget.
Right, but I thought the line item was 30 grand for striping.
I don't think it's, we have an exclusive line item that's just for striping. It's, it's part of our paved roads budget line, which I don't know the total budget off the top of my head, so not paving, but under paved roads. I see Mark's on, do you know off the top of your head, Mark? Probably not.
No, Aaron would be better equipped to answer that question, but yeah, there is no separate line item for striping. It's in with either paving or, or paved roads.
Paved roads budget is $85,000 for 2021, Dan. And we've, we've accounted for the paving in that budget.
Anyway, I bring it up, it was right around, I thought it was around 30, but we've been creeping up due to the cost of living, so.
Okay, any other comments from the board or anything Mark would like to add?
No, we had, good luck with those people last year, no problems, very accommodating, the work was good. No problems here.
All right, so looking for a motion to approve the 2021 Striping Award.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Air I.
Bailey I.
Mantrick I.
Secoche I.
And NAP I. All right. The Community Development Block Grant for Lee Oaks.
This one's for Barrington Oaks.
Sorry, Barrington Oaks, yeah.
Yeah, so we have two items for continuing this project, so where we left off last, the Select Board had authorized the pursuit of this grant opportunity on behalf of Barrington Oaks Cooperative. We also awarded the grant writing to Donna Lane. So I'm glad to report that the application was approved, which is especially exciting because this, this grant round was actually a last-minute grant round with less funding than normal. So the, the selection committee identified this as a high enough priority to include this project in light of a lot of other applications at the same time. So very glad that they're getting the assistance that they need. So after that approval was issued, we advertised a request for qualifications for an environmental engineer and a request for proposals for grant administration. The first item on the agenda is grant administration. We advertised that on April 8th. And we put it in the union leader on our website and sent it out to the appropriate listservs. Not surprisingly, we received one response from Donna Lane. As you'll remember, there's a tremendous lack of grant administrators across the state. And this is pretty typical, to only receive one response. We've worked with Donna Lane before successfully, and my recommendation is that the Select Board award Donna Lane the Community Development Block Grant Administration scope.
Dan?
Oh. My hand raised?
Yes, it is.
Sorry.
No problem. Great. So, any, any comments, any discussion item? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to award the CDBG grant or component to, for Donna Lane.
Second.
Roll call.
Bailey I.
Mantrick I.
Secoche I.
And NAP I.
And I'll include in that motion, if this is your understanding, authorizing the town administrator to execute documents.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that's what's in the, in my report. So the next item is the environmental engineer, so this is a requirement of the Community Development Block Grant. The town received three qualification statements from SRW, from Beta Group, and from Dubois and King. You can see all three of those in your printed packets, and they're available on the town's website. The Community Development Block Grant provides a scoring matrix for environmental engineers, so you'll find a printed copy of. You have?
I didn't get it.
Yeah, I don't have it either, my apologies, it's linked to my report, but it, it looks like I failed to print it out, which I apologize. So the, there's a scoring summary that the Community Development Block Grant formed that they put together that has four categories that you review each applicant for. So staff followed their established process and identified that SRW ranked the highest with a score of 36, followed by Dubois and King, who had a score of 33, and Beta Group, who had a score of 29. So it would be my recommendation that the Select Board consider selecting SRW to be the environmental engineer for the Community Development Block Grant for Barrington Oaks Cooperative, and authorize the town administrator to execute the documents.
Is there any discussion from the board?
I have none.
Hearing none, is there a motion to select SRW? I'll make the motion to select SRW for the environmental engineer for the Community Development Block Grant for Barrington Oaks Cooperative, and authorize TA MacGyver to execute all exec, to all documents related to it.
So moved.
Second.
Air I.
Yep.
George, air I.
Oh, Bailey I.
Mantrick I.
Secoche I.
NAP I.
And the Municipal Office Administrator provided a link to that selection form in the comments for anybody interested, thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item up is the ratification of the October 19th, 2020 expenditure decision. Connor, do you want to talk a little bit about this?
Yeah, real brief, you'll remember last year, the Select Board authorized up to $10,000, it was on October 19th, for the FEMA application hazard mitigation for the Lakeside Oaks Project, preliminary engineering and the FEMA application. So as you know, that was completed and submitted. The engineer finally got around to sending an invoice, and I was reviewing the materials and I noticed that the, the motion at the time did not indicate the anticipated funding source, which is the Bridge and Culvert Capital Reserve account. And so, because it's a capital reserve account, we need specific authorization to spend from that account to be included in the motion. So at this time, I'm asking the Select Board to ratify that decision by authorizing the expenditure of up to $10,000 from the Bridge and Culvert Capital Reserve for the engineering FEMA application on Lakeside Oaks Drive.
Open to the board for comment?
Sounds like a done deal, actually.
Well, yes and no, here I guess is my concern on it, and I know Dan had, Dan air had raised this concern before, is we're now talking about spending $10,000 on hazard mitigation on a private road.
Exactly, my vote's no.
That was, as I rec, oh, sorry, Dan.
I got in.
Yeah, as I recall, though, doesn't the repair of the private road greatly affect either the culvert or, or some part of the, some part of the city's own road?
So the, yeah, the, the, those culverts are critical infrastructure for the operation of the dam. And as it relates to spending on a private road, the town's attorney and, and review of the, the circumstances are, it is perfectly allowable for the town to improve the infrastructure. At the time, we also reviewed the opportunity to permanently discontinue the culverts, which was not an option. I guess regardless, the, the Select Board has already commissioned this work on October 19th. The, the bill is due, but the, like I said, the, the vote on October 19th did not include the funding source, which, if it was an operating budget line, it wouldn't be a big deal. But because it's a capital reserve, we need to specifically call it out in the motion to be shown in the minutes. So certainly there will be plenty more opportunity to talk about the project as a whole, but this is work that a majority of the board approved, and we, we just need to unlock the funds from the proper funding source. We hope to hear in June on that FEMA application to see if we have approval for an alternative funding source. And so certainly no work beyond the $10,000 will be done until we, until we know what's available for funding.
Any other commentary from the board?
Is there any reason why we didn't authorize funding?
Well, you did authorize funding, but the, so when I presented it to the board, I explained that the funding was from the Bridge and Culvert Capital Reserve account. I even went back to watch the video, but the specific motion the board made, which was then recorded in the minutes, just approved up to $10,000, didn't specify the Bridge and Culvert Capital Reserve. So in the, you'll remember last October, I, I worked with Mark and we provided a road construction project list for this year, and each one of those listed the project and the funding source. This project was listed as a funding source for the Bridge and Culvert Capital Reserve, but then when we were talking about the FEMA application, you know, we, we talked about where the funding was coming from, it just failed to make it into the motion and then into the minutes.
Connor, what are you doing? Everyone keeps getting up and leaving.
I know. Tough crowd.
Yeah.
Well, I move that we ratify the decision to spend up to $10,000 on the engineering and FEMA hazard mitigation applications for the Lakeside Oak Culvert Project. These funds to come from the Bridge and Culvert Capital Reserve.
Okay, looking for a second.
I'll second it.
Seconded by George Bailey.
George, you disappeared.
No, I'm right here, I dropped something, I had to pick it up, thank you.
Roll call vote.
Air, no.
Bailey I.
Mantrick I.
NAP I, sorry.
Secoche I.
Hey. Like I said, I'm all sorts of off tonight here. 2021 roadside cleanup, which happened this past Saturday, you know, looked like a good turnout, unfortunately, I was over at the T-ball field, so I was not participating in roadside cleanup.
Yeah, so just a huge thank you to everybody that participated. This was a tremendous event, I know Erin's on, I'll let her echo those comments, I wanted to pull up, yeah, here it is, and just share a quick slide with the, with the board and community. If you can see that now, of all the, all the trash. Erin, if you're on and want to give a couple of quick stats on what we were able to accomplish over the weekend.
Good evening. So, again, this past Saturday, we held, we held our third annual roadside cleanup event. The weather was perfect and so was the company. We had about 150 volunteers hitting the roads to help do their part to clean up the town. While I do not have the tonnage totals yet, the sheer volume of bags will probably surpass last year's total. But whatever that total weight is, it's far too much. Along with hundreds of bags filled with cans, more alcoholic than not, coffee cups, papers, bottles, and cardboard, volunteers also picked up seven car tires, one truck tire, an outboard boat motor, two TVs, a computer tower, miscellaneous political signs, and some metal objects. So, I just encourage residents that some of the ways that we can reduce the litter is to secure their loads before driving. I know some of this is accidental, but we do have some people who consistently take the same routes home, and it's just, you know, we have a Bud Light guy on one road, and we have a Twisted Tea guy on another, and you know, holding on to your trash till it can be disposed of properly and recycled whenever possible. You know, just keep a bag or something in your car, so it's not ending up on the sides of the road. I know the consensus was, you know, it's an unfortunate thing that we have to hold this event, but it definitely creates a sense of community, and a lot of them make a point to save the date and make it a family affair, so you know, I just can, you know, want to thank everybody for being part of the solution and not the pollution.
Thank you for all that you do with this, Erin, it's really appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Select Person Bailey?
Thank you, sir, listen, I would ask that the board consider sending a thank you note to all the individuals involved on this for helping us pick up or turn around and use, use the media and, under your name with authorization, of course, thanking everybody that participated in this project, I just add, put that out for consideration.
I think it's well worth posting something on the Facebook, on the community Facebook page or the town Facebook page, recognizing everyone who participated in the trash cleanup day.
Great.
All right. Next item on the list is the under old business is, or nope. Yeah. Lost my spot, sorry. New business. All right, first quarter financial analysis. Connor, do you want to talk about where we're at? Looks like the numbers are off to a good start.
Absolutely, yeah, they, they really are. I won't belabor it, but I'll happy, be happy to answer questions, I'll kind of give you the executive summary. So all these numbers are through the end of March, one quarter of our fiscal year, 25%. You'll see on, on page one, if you look at that pie chart, our expenditures are tracking right at 20%, which is, which is on track with previous years. While that does include some one-time expenditures, there are still some one-time expenditures that happen in the, in the next three quarters of the year. So we're really in, in good shape there. On page two, if you look at that bar chart, you'll notice that there's only a couple of individual departments tracking above 25%. And so, for example, in Financial Administration, we're just barely above 25%. We pay some of our one-time contract expenditures in the first quarter. And so that brings us a little bit above average. General Government Buildings, we've, we've completed some of the bigger projects, planned projects for building maintenance, so we're tracking a little bit above 25% there, but not by much. You'll notice that all the rest of the categories not only are less than 25%, but most are, are at or below 29, or 2020, which is in orange. So we're really looking great. Couple of the callouts on low expenditures on legal, you'll notice we're tracking far below where we were last year. And on Transfer Station Administration, you'll notice that we're tracking far below where we were last year. Legal is just based on the need for utilization, and Transfer Station is based on the vacancy that we've had. that we've had. Uh, on page three, switching over to revenues, again, we're 25% through the year. Um, on revenues, we're tracking at about 30% of estimated revenues collected, which is great. Um, and so as that compares to last year, um, we're really, um, we're really far improved from our revenue position from last year. Um, so, uh, in 2020 at this time, we'd only collected 19% of our estimated revenue. Um, so we're really in a solid, uh, footing, uh, from the revenue standpoint and the state budget has not yet been finalized, um, but all signs point to, um, the state sources of revenue, um, will end up collecting more than we estimated, um, during the budget process, um, which is a positive thing. Um, on page four, you'll see the, uh, revenue categories. So, um, the, the percent collected is, is on the left side. Um, the, um, the overall, you'll notice on, uh, that total, uh, the bar chart on the all the way right, um, shows that we're, um, tracking 30% now, 19%. Um, we're far ahead on our building permit fees, um, in large part due to increased activity at the beginning of this year compared to the beginning of last year, but also you remember we increased our fees. Um, motor vehicle, this is one of the biggest categories at almost 2 million, um, and we are tracking right, um, right online and a little ahead uh, of where we were last year. Um, so again, the summaries, we're in a strong financial position. I provided links in my report to the, um, full data, uh, for expenditures and revenue. Uh, and the only additional piece from a financial analysis I wanted to hit on was the, um, delinquency rate. So this is something we followed closely, um, and I will say that the numbers since the beginning of the pandemic have really defied logic. So, um, this was something that I'd anticipated, we'd watch and see that the pandemic led to an increased delinquency rate with property taxes. And we've actually seen the exact opposite and we're at a point where we, we have, in recent history, we have not had so many people paying their taxes on time, which is terrific. Um, so the, um, by June, uh, the delinquency rate is typically down to about one and a half percent. So what that means is, um, in June, we go to lean and we typically only lean about one and a half percent of the total, um, tax bill that's due from the prior year. Um, with a couple of months to go, we're already down to a 1.8% delinquency rate, um, which is just terrific. It was up at, um, two and a half percent at this time last year. Um, so we're in a strong position there. Um, the, the cumulative delinquency, which captures all of our outstanding tax bills, uh, or, or tax bills that are past due. Um, this time last year, it was almost 1.2 million and, um, this year it's down to 900,000. So like I said, we're at a position where, where more people are paying their taxes on time now than they have in, in recent memory, which is just a terrific thing for the town, um, for cash flow and, and for accumulating interest and penalties, um, on folks not paying their taxes on time. So, um, happy to answer any questions, um, and, um, happy to, um, also answer your questions from the community. If you have questions, feel free to contact me.
Very good. Thank you. Um, adding a working foreman position to the highway department. Um, hopefully everyone's had a chance to review it. I will open it up for discussion from the board. Dan Ayer.
I'll make it transparent. I'm not gonna voice my opinion on it. I may apply. Time will tell. Thank you.
Okay. Any other commentary from the board?
George, I can see you're talking, but you're muted.
You're muted.
Thank you. Sorry for that. The only comment I'm going to make is that, uh, the presentation in, uh, Connor's, uh, posting is the fact that went into, uh, the detail necessary for expenditures and the cost on page seven, I gotta say. So I just want to say that, uh, I looked at it and it seems feasible. So that's my comment, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, Damon?
Yeah, uh, do we have to, do we have to do something here? Do we have to vote on something to, uh, authorize this position? Um, and if so, how do we do that?
Yeah, so if the board feels comfortable making a decision, um, yes, the next step, um, to create the position would be for the select board, uh, to authorize the creation of the position as presented. Um, you have a copy of the draft job description, um, which includes the status of the position. Um, and so if the select board feels they have enough information, that would be the next step.
Are there any other comments from any of the board? So I, I know it was brought up prior, um, and I know we have the funding to cover it this year, but I also know there is going to be a funding gap next year on how this would be covered. So we're gonna put ourselves on approximately 40K in the hole is the estimate for next year with this department?
So yes and no. Um, you know, I think if you're looking at the position in a vacuum, um, and the highway department budget in a vacuum, yes, the anticipated increase, um, would be about 40,000 for next year. Um, but we already know that we will not be, um, budgeting for any purchase of winter sand next year, um, which will create room in the budget. Um, we haven't done the full analysis from this past winter, um, based on the budget reductions that we've made. Um, but I can tell you, looking at some preliminary numbers, we're, we're ahead of, um, we're ahead from where we were last year based on utilization. Um, so, you know, I called out in my report that, um, based on Mark's management of the department, we were able to reduce the budget $70,000 last year just in winter maintenance. Um, and so, you know, I, I think it's, it's important for the fi- five of you, um, to think about what impact this will have during the 2020 budget or 2022 budget, um, development. Um, but I would ask you to consider looking at it as adding some money back in, um, which, which we took out during this last process, but it won't be 40,000 because the, like I said, the, the sand budget will be reduced, um, anyways. But no, it's an important point, Chair now.
Right. My only concern with that is the sand budget is kind of like a, a, really like a one-time freebie or so here, like we're, eventually we will spend more in that realm.
So yeah, Mark thinks it's more of like a three-year freebie. Um, but no, you're, and, and I mentioned that in my report, you're 100% right. Um, and, but I, I think what it does, um, you know, the board, I think, has been very successful from a financial management standpoint, um, keeping expenditure spikes and, um, tax rate, um, valleys to a minimum. You know, a sign of a, a financially stable community is, is, is kind of, um, phasing things in and phasing things out. So, um, there's some consistency. Um, and so that's what the sand, you know, this, I mentioned the sand budget for that purpose. That allows the growth to happen over a couple of years instead of, um, experiencing that spike in one year.
Yep. I, I just tend to be like, I wa, I would rather, my preference is I would much rather put my resources into the material rather than becoming a, a staff-heavy department, but I understand the importance with regard to the fact that Mark, you know, Mark can't be Superman and do it all himself. Uh, Jim, Jim Sikosha, you were next.
Uh, so two things, um, what is the salary for this position? I think I heard 40,000?
No, 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 that's part of it.
Yeah, that's this year.
Oh, okay.
That it's a, it's, I think we're budgeting.
And then the only other thing I had was, um, I was looking at the, the listed requirements and, I mean, you know, sometimes when people will look at, you know, at a town or a turbo camp or a Sikosha and say, if I don't have that qualification, I probably shouldn't apply. So I didn't know if the flagger certification, i- if that's a huge deal or if it's a common, um, certification to have, but I don't want somebody to look at, you know, um, you know, what they have to do to, to get the job and be like, I don't have a flag, flagger cert. And then we could potentially miss out on somebody that, you know, if we get them in and, oh yeah, we gotta, you know, you're gonna do a four-hour online class or something, uh, you know, that's all. Uh, is Mark on? Can, uh?
Yeah, Mark, we can add, um, desired next to that, um, similar to how we did with the transfer station operator. I think that's a good point, Jim. We wouldn't want, um, somebody to dismiss it. Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the qualifications as written are, I mean, to me, it's more of a wish list. I mean, your, your chances of finding somebody that fits every one of those qualifications is pretty slim. Uh, so I think you kind of need to leave it a little open-ended. The big thing that I'm looking for is engineering experience. Gotta know how to read a plan. You gotta know grade. You gotta know that water will not run uphill. You know, it's just, that's, that's the most important thing that I'm looking for. Uh, we've got a lot of drainage issues.
I, I, yeah, that, that's awesome. I just think maybe we could rework it a little bit to make it more, more friendly, um, and saying like, hey, you know, th- these are, are really desired, but you know, engineering, this is, this is a definite must, just so, uh, because you're, we're gonna have a hard time finding people for this. Um, so we want to try and get it out to as, as many applicants as we can.
Yeah, it, it's gonna have to be the right person for sure. These guys aren't on every street corner.
Yeah, and I, and Jim, you make a great point. If you look at the sixth bullet point, um, this is something that's, that we include in most job descriptions, which says that any equivalent combination of education and experience, which demonstrates the possession of the required knowledge, skills and abilities. And so, you know, the job description is, is certainly the foundation, but, um, what, if and when we advertise this position, um, we'll put together an advertisement, which is typically about like a paragraph, which calls out those most essential, um, qualities that we're looking for. And, and typically that's what people are looking at when they decide whether or not to apply. Uh, but no, you make a great point.
Very good.
Thanks. Dan, Damon?
Yeah, I think, uh, it's, I'm glad we're looking at, at the cost of this thing, but I think if we look out into the future of this thing, uh, this is gonna be a pretty important transitional thing. Like I say, Mark can't do all of this. He, he left his ass off his chest this week, I saw. Um, and we need to get started on this. Even if it costs us some money, this is probably money well spent. So, um, I think we ought to go ahead.
Starts at 48,000. And it's, it's an hourly.
With benefits, the estimate was, uh, fully loaded, you're roughly 80K, is that correct?
Correct.
Right.
Okay, that's, that's for you.
I just think that's, I just think that's money well spent.
I, in a business sense, I would, I would agree with that. One of the things that I try to be mindful of is that this is, we are here representing the townspeople's money and how we impact their lifestyle and we have to be conscientious of.
I, I agree completely with that. I just think it's their money well spent.
Yeah, that's why we're here.
So where are we at with regard to the foreman's position? Is there more, besides the changes that Jim noted? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that. What was that?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, so a motion to accept the working foreman position with the noted changes?
Second.
Correct.
Motion from Jim Sikosha, second from, I, I don't know who was first, George or Dan?
Dan was.
Second from Dan and, uh, roll call vote.
Ayer, aye.
Man track, aye.
Sikosha.
Napa. Um, you know, I do ask that everyone is really conscientious about this. I know Connor, Connor runs a tight ship with regard to budgets, but if we're adding staff, I want to make sure we're really thoughtful about what the impact of that is to the townspeople.
Great. Really appreciate the board's support and really looking forward, um, to, to moving ahead with this position. Um, and we'll keep you posted. Thank you. Look, uh, start mentioning this to your friends and neighbors that you think would be a, a good candidate.
Yep. Uh, next. Yeah, no problem, Mark. Thank you for all that you do. We do value the work you perform for us.
Amen.
Thank you. Um, the recreation semi-permanent storage shed, is Jesse on?
So I just texted her. Um, she has a concurrent recreation commission meeting, um, so I knew that she was, um, uh, double booked, but I, I think she's gonna try to hop over. Um, but I'll take lead for right now. So they have a, a Conex box storage container that's been down at the recreation facility for a number of years. Um, they've realized that, that that is no longer temporary and, uh, they, they need to have something, um, more permanent and more importantly, more sightly. Um, and so they have the funding in place to do that. They're looking to get a, a prefabbed, uh, 12 by 20 shed. I included a mock-up, um, in my town administrator report. Um, they received three quotes. It's 80, $8,374. So the action for the select board is really twofold. One, the select board is responsible for all town facilities, and so the first, um, request is that you consider allowing the placement of the shed on town property to replace the storage container. Um, the second piece is that the town has had a longstanding, um, tradition of, um, holding the town to the same standard as all commercial entities, uh, when it comes to site review through the planning board. And so that, um, uh, that requirement, if, if a commercial entity were going to add a shed of this size, it would need to go through site review. Um, that said, um, we're asking that the select board consider waiving that requirement simply because the recreation department already went through site review, um, recently as it related to, um, their proposed addition, which is currently on hold. Um, and this is really a minor, um, a minor placement on that lot and really only replacing a storage container that's there. Uh, certainly if they needed to go to the planning board, it would be a quick trip, but it would add a little bit of cost, uh, notifying of butters and things like that. Um, and we, um, I personally did not feel like, um, it was the intent of the town's tradition, um, that a placement like this would require a trip to the planning board. So first is, do you want the shed? Two is, are you willing to waive the requirement for planning board?
Dan?
What's the construction of it? Is it wood?
I understand it's wood, but Jesse's here and I'm happy to let her answer any of your questions.
Hi, Jesse.
Hi, sorry, I was just coming out of a rec commission meeting. Um, so Dan, to answer your question, I believe the, um, the material would be wood, from what I remember.
Jesse, I, um, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Dan. Do you have any other questions?
Well, yeah, I'm not in favor of any plastic upright thing, coverall. If it's wood construction, it'd be secure. We're getting a lot, lot of heavy winds right now, so what, we might spend money to do it right. Thank you.
So, um, I have a question for you, Jesse. I was just curious, um, why we were, what, why we're moving away from the, do we, oh, well, I guess two questions. Let me start with, do we own the Conex container or do we rent it?
So I am under the assumption that we own it. Um, it has been here since honestly, any probably before my time, which is going back probably 16 years. Um, I don't know how the town necessarily acquired it, but it has been utilized for all of our community event storage, like our trunk or treat event, um, Easter egg, you know, those type of things. Um, so I honestly can't answer your question in regards to owning it. I d- I don't know how we acquired it, so I apologize.
We do not pay lease.
Right. I'm like, we're not paying rent, so that's, would imply we own it then. Um, I, I guess my other question is, is there a reason why a shed is more preferable over the Conex container?
Yeah, so this current container, just because of the, um, the shape of it, is really hard to store stuff in. It's very, very thin. So with the shelving units that we have in there and just the really odd, um, items, especially for those trunk or treat events, it is really hard to actually store stuff and have it stored, um, appropriately. Another piece that we're kind of running into is the back storage space in the actual gymnasium itself is pretty bogged down with program stuff. Um, we have, um, had done a lot of rehabbing of that space and organizing, and we're just really kind of struggling with that back room. So we were hoping that with the additional space in the shed, that we would be able to relocate some of the supplies that's located in the, uh, back room of the current. that we would be able to relocate some of the supplies that's located in the back room of the current gymnasium and put some more items that are kind of in that main entryway back into that back closet. So there's more room for people to kind of, you know, drop their shoes, you know, try to wipe their feet off before they're heading across the gym to do any registrations.
I, I don't know if it's something you folks have considered, but they, they make a unit that goes over the top of them. So the Conex container, I think you have like a twenty foot unit currently. They tend to be around about between two and twenty five hundred dollars to purchase. If you had two of them there, plus they make a domed covered roof, you actually could add a pretty significant amount of storage and you can put a roll up door on the end of it. You can easily face them in. So you can either have open storage or have closed storage, plus it's secured storage and the Conex container will last a lot longer than the storage shed. Plus, there's also this great idea where they seem to make a really good movie screen. I don't know if anyone's seen any of that, but you know. So if there, if there was ever a thought to do something like that through rec, it's just another possible opportunity that may not cost you eighty three hundred dollars.
If I may?
Dan, Dan Ayers first and then you may, George. And then I obviously will do what the, my personal take is, is we would do what the rec department's wishes are, but I just wanted to present that option as something to consider. Go ahead, Dan.
I agree with your comments on that. It's more a long term, more solid investment. And with the price of wood right now, you could be more stable on a fixed budget. This shed's going to bounce around so many times this year on the price. I don't think they'll lock in on that, any price that he give you.
George?
Thank you very much. I would ask that you would consider going and searching for another container because some of the newer ones that come out have doors, front and back, which would be very advantageous to you because you could put certain items in one side and be able to utilize the space a lot more. And I know that they would bring it here for storage. And the reason I say that is that organization that I belong to, we looked at purchasing them and there is quite a variance in prices, but it depends upon whether you get a used one or a brand new one or one that has minimal damage to it. But just a suggestion to go look at. Thank you.
Jesse?
Thank you. No, I definitely appreciate all the feedback. And if that's something that you guys feel that would be beneficial, that's definitely something that I can look into. Originally, I do feel that that container that is there, and I clearly don't know a ton about containers. So if there is, you guys know about something in regards to like facelifts for them, I would definitely be open to it. But that container out there is definitely pretty far from appealing in regards to the eye, looking at the rec department as it is. So that was something that we also were kind of considering is just really trying to kind of make this place look a little bit, you know, up to date with some of the projects that we're considering. So that would just be another thing that I had with concern and kind of in the process of that is again, just the, just the rundownness of the current shed that we have or container that we have.
Dan first?
I'll make a motion for Dan comment to waive site review on this. And then have seek other options is up maybe, but waive the site review on a motion right now.
Right, George, what was your?
I, and I apologize for this, but they do have containers that are thirty, forty feet and some of them have are a little bit longer. So you could look, look at that and like Simon mentioned, you could get two of them, put a dome in the middle and still be less than what this building is proposed to cost you and it'd still be a lot stronger and your security would, would still be there with doors on both ends. Thank you.
All right. So Dan had made a motion to waive site review. Do I have a second to that motion?
Yeah.
So a second from select person Sikosha? Roll call vote?
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Man track, aye.
And Napa, aye. All right. So the next part was the replacement of their shed. Do we want, the, the question is, do we want to vote to approve it? With the request that they look at alternative options and I would gladly, I actually have a bunch of information on that, that I would gladly send over to Jesse anyway, if, if there is interest in it.
Could we wait, could we wait two weeks? Could we table this and then, and have her come back to us in two weeks? Is that too long?
What I might propose, if the board is willing, what I heard is that the select board is comfortable allowing the rec department to proceed with what they think is best, but wanted to make sure to offer some suggestions based on knowledge. So I think if, if the select board was willing to say, yes, rec department, Jesse, we're okay with you changing the storage there, you know, chairperson Nap can send over some details, George and otherwise, but, but let them carry on on their own devices without another trip back to the select board. If the board's comfortable with that, I think that would be more efficient. But certainly if the board wanted to see him again, we could wait two weeks.
So one thing I would, hold on, hold on, hold on. One thing I would say is just as a reminder to the board that they are using the recreation revolving fund for this. They're not using town's money, so to speak. So select person Sikosha started to say something and then Dan has raised his hand.
I would like to make a motion to go forward with the rec doing what they need to do over there for storage.
Dan?
My only concern is quality for long term. And some of these sheds are not built to quality. They don't last. So they do whatever they want. This is the best quality that I'm looking for.
Well, yeah, they can do what they want. I think they were just kind of running it by us.
Well, do we have, they have to have our approval to put it on town land.
Gotcha.
So essentially, in voting to approve this, we are saying we agree with the fact that they may place a semi-permanent. Structure, structure. I was getting there, like I said, I'm a little.
I got you, I got you.
So we are giving them permission to place a semi-permanent structure on town owned property. Is the board in agreement with this? And do I, I have a motion from select person Sikosha and I'd be looking for a second.
I'll second that. Man track, second.
So roll call vote?
Air, aye.
Bailey.
I know.
He's thinking, give him a minute.
I, I really, I, I have to tell you, I'm not in favor of that wooden shed, but I'll say aye.
Man track, aye.
Sikosha, aye.
And I'll say Napa. And just to ease your burden, George, some of us have preference to drive Subarus and some of us have preferences to drive Toyotas. It's just a matter of what each person chooses and you can't make that decision for everybody.
Oh, I'm not trying to do that because I don't, I'm not financially set to buy the better of the two.
Uh, thank you.
driveway.
Thank you, everybody. And Andy, if you truly are open to that, I, if you don't mind, I can reach out to you tomorrow. We can coordinate that if you're okay with it.
Yep, that would be fine. I will gladly help out if I can.
Great, thank you guys very much.
No problem. Thanks, Jesse. All right. Let's see here. Swain's Road, Class Six Improvement.
Yeah, so this is, I think this is a really positive one for the town. And so I'll start by explaining what the select board's role is. So the Swain Road is a town road. The town maintains the first portion of the road and then it turns into a gravel class six road, which the town does not maintain, but the town still owns the road. So pursuant to RSA two thirty six nine, two thirty six ten and two thirty six eleven, the select board is, is, has authority over the construction activities in the road itself. So this is different than the classics and private road agreement process or the subdivision process, at which point the select board requires construction activities to meet the town's road standard. In this case, the residents of, of the classic section of Swain Road are already responsible for maintaining the road. And one specific resident, Jack Dibb, is interested in making a rather substantial investment in the improvement of, in the improvement of the road in order to have some long, some longstanding results. And so the road agent and I started meeting out there last year, at the end of last year, to review the proposed scope of work, which would be adding geotextiles and, and overtopping with gravel to create essentially a floating base that will hold the material on the road. That, that specific section ends up a muddy mess. I know the select board has seen pictures, has been out there. There's, there's a couple of bad sections. This is one of them. So the, the point of coming before the board is that the board would need to authorize this work. The specific request and where the specific request waivers from, you know, the, the construction of the subdivision road is that the, this section of Swain Road is only sixteen to eighteen feet wide currently, the traveled lane, and in some cases even narrower than that. And so for financial reasons, including the ledge on one side and utility poles on another, the proposal is to only upgrade, only do this geotextile upgrade to sixteen, maybe eighteen feet wide of this road. And so before bringing this to the board, I had conversations with the fire chief, the police chief, the building inspector, the planner, and obviously Mark and I have been working closely on it. And nobody, without exception, nobody was opposed to the proposed work. Everybody felt like this is an improvement to the road, obviously funded by the one resident or maybe multiple residents of the road, and we should absolutely let them proceed. So it's not a matter of just a green light and leading them, leaving them to their devices. This is a project which would be monitored closely by the road agent. The plans would be presented to the road agent for review and approval and the construction would be monitored by the road agent as well. But like I said, everybody involved feels confidently that this would make lasting improvements. The request is to the select board is to allow about a four hundred and fifty foot section of Swain Road to be upgraded as described at a width of sixteen to eighteen feet. And I believe Mr. Dibb is, is on the meeting tonight, if you have any questions for him specifically.
Select person, air?
As you know, I am an observationist. I have physically been on that road the past three years, all the conversation. First of all, I cannot, we, on one person driveway on a class six road, we made him go to twenty feet. The fire code is twenty feet. You only need sixteen feet of travel way and two foot shoulders. And I believe it can happen there even with lash, hammer or put under drain underneath it to get around it. But the problem there is they have no swells. They need to control the water. I don't care what you do to it, to you control that water. They tried to work on it a little bit. They went down to ninety five cent of an inch and a half stone base. As it's all base right now, and they do make fabric seventeen and a half feet wide there, but you need to control the water, in my opinion. And then within the next year, there's going to be a major subdivision up for sale on that road and it's going to be developed. So that road's going to be brought up to the more of a standard anyway. So there should be more thought put into this. And the guy wants to do all this geofabric and gravel. I feel we should do the full width like everyone else in town does for the fire safety. And this is future development coming in. There's going to be, be changed anyway. So I just think we should be consistent with the twenty foot. Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Select person Bailey?
Thank you very much. Some of those comments made, I have questions to it. And what specifically did the fire chief have to say? If he did have anything to say on the width of the road, could Connor answer that?
Yeah, so the chief's on, he can certainly speak for himself, but I discussed the proposed work with him in detail and he agreed that the, that in his opinion, he didn't see any reason for the board to not support this because it would be an improvement from what it is right now. And to select person Ayers' point, if there was ever a subdivision or even a new house that would be put out on Swain Road, the, the select board has made it clear that the requirements would be that, that the entire road be brought up to town standard. This, what's before the board right now is distinctly different than that. The, the residents are responsible for maintaining the road as it stands. They're just trying to make improvements to save them money in the long run. But, but yes, the road, the fire chief is in support.
Thank you. The other, the other question I have for considering, Mr. Chairman, is the fact that monies for this project, are we going to require that we hold it in escrow? Or how are we going to do that so we just don't get a half a pro, and not? I've seen it done before and that's why I'm bringing it up. I've seen where a project gets to sixty, seventy percent completion and the funds evaporate. So how would we handle that? Does anybody have suggestions, Mr. Chairman, on how we would handle it?
So do you want to talk, Connor? Do you want me to?
No, I'm happy to. It's an excellent point, George, and, and this is certainly the first stage of the process. But for something of this magnitude, it would be very reasonable for the select board to consider asking for a bond to be put in place to, in the amount to return the road to stable condition. And so that's, that's not uncommon for the other road construction projects we have in town. But the specifics of that would be worked out if, if we know there's board support for proceeding. And if, if the board wanted to condition proceeding on an assurance, such as a bond in place to make sure that the, if, if something happened partway through the project, there was something to cover, either completion or returning the road, then that I feel like would be appropriate.
Well, I must tell you, Connor, I don't like the word to return to a stable condition because you know that would become a staple for the attorneys to return this to a stable condition.
Understood.
Yeah, that was, is, is George kind of alluded to. I guess one of my, my only real concern on it is that if it, if it was, if the road work was completed and it in some way, shape or form did not pan out to where the geotextile moved or there was an issue with it where now it created, it compromised the road and it made the road unsafe for the rest of the residents. Because we approved this, I could see this being, becoming a legal sticky wicket for us. So I think I would want to have it probably reviewed on a, like what are, what becomes the impact from municipal end by authorizing a person to, to put in an engineered base without having to bring it up to the existing road standard?
Yep, it's a great point. And, and so that language, the legal language could absolutely be drafted and reviewed and the, the check and balance on the town side would be the road agent. And if the, if the board or the road agent felt like that wasn't sufficient or, you know, the proposed work was too complex, then, you know, it's also something the board could consider is to have the town's engineer review the plans or, or review the work, you know, during construction. Obviously, that would add costs, so that would need to be something discussed with, you know, the resident or whoever's paying for it. But, you know, when, when Mark and I were out there, Mark is, is very familiar with the type of work that was being described. And this is just conceptual, there's no plans yet. And so I would, I would leave it to Mark to, to say whether he would be comfortable reviewing the work after it was designed. the work after it was designed. But that checks and balances, those checks and balances could come later in the process if the board was willing to proceed.
Mark, are you still on?
He is.
He must be doing something else.
I was hoping I could catch him and...
On the phone, yeah, on the phone, it takes a minute to unmute, but I also don't see any progress. So he could be tied up at the moment.
Mr. Chairman, my concern is that the citizen, Mr. Dibbs, is very generous in his proposal, but I really worry about, as you brought up also, the responsibility of the town on the construction, the approval of the plans and everything else. I think we should have this reviewed and see what's going to be the safest for the town. Thank you.
So, is Mark unmuted?
No.
Okay. I guess I would also like to start by thanking Mr. Dibb because it's, it is the epitome of being not only a good neighbor, but a good community member to step up and have the willingness to improve that much of your road in such a substantial way. So thank you for all of that. I guess my general thought on it is, I don't have enough information to feel comfortable making the decision to move forward at this point. And I think we would need some clarity on it, but we have to provide him some framework on what clarity looks like. It can't just be an open-ended "go see clarity" without saying, here's what clarity is. So what are we looking for that would make the board feel comfortable approving this for Mr. Dibb to make his own life and the lives of his neighbors better? Select person, air?
I see the biggest problem over there is water. They need to control the trench lines. They started working over there, they just went in there, someone went in there with a grader. They started, they did a real good job, they got a good damn base here now. But if you don't control the water, whatever you do, you know, lose what you put in vast. And then that's about concerns and stuff. But I feel we need to be consistent. We're making a one person upgrade to 20 feet for one house. We've got a bunch of houses down there. I think we should have some clarity on that, that we're consistent. Thank you.
Well, I think this is, I guess I understand your point down the road, but it's not relevant to what he's offering to do. So...
That's all I'm saying, what he's willing to do.
Well, I don't know about that because they're responsible for maintaining their road.
Right.
So I don't think it's illegal either. Select person Bailey, do you have specifics that you would like out of it? I think, so controlling the water is the first item I have.
Well, I would say to you, Mr. Chairman, that other than controlling the water, I would be more concerned with the engineering aspect of it and the assurance that the town would not be held responsible in the case of lack of payment. And Connor has said that to have a bond, and I must say that I was delinquent in thinking that, but a bond has to be there so that it still protects the town. And he wants to go back to the original surface or the original condition of it. I think the original condition should be spelled out. That's some of the concerns I have.
Okay, so I have controlling water, a bond for the project, and then some sort of review that absolves the town of responsibility for it.
Thank you, sir.
Is there any... Oh, we have Mark.
I had to redone, I ran out of, I ran out of mutes. So what was the question for me earlier? I was trying to get in, but I couldn't.
So the question was around, you having reviewed this project, there are some pitfalls that have been identified or some concerns identified from the board end, and we were looking for your input on this project.
Yeah, as Danny was saying, you definitely have to pay attention to the drainage. There's one culvert that'll probably need to be replaced, or at the very least, reset. It's probably rotten, so it probably should be replaced. The swales down the side of the road will just naturally increase a little because the height of the road's going to come up by however much gravel they're going to put there. And I can't remember the, I can't remember the thickness of the gravel they were going to put, but it's six or eight inches anyway. So that'll give you a little more swale on the edge of the road to work with. Part of the existing swale seems to be pitched the wrong way, the water's just laying there. So, yeah, Dan's right, there needs to be some ditching work done in addition to the fabric and the gravel.
Okay.
Mark, a question that came up for you is, you know, your role in this would be to protect the town's interests, to review the plans and monitor construction. Do you feel comfortable enough with the proposed means and methods? That that's something that you could do? Or do you think that the engineer would need to review the plans and/or see the construction to verify that, as Andy had mentioned earlier, there isn't a failure in a couple of years that ends up leaving the residents up there worse off?
Well, I don't think you, I don't think you need a detailed engineering study for this. I mean, it's pretty straightforward. I mean, the fabric, the fabric method is, it's sound engineering. There's no real rocket science there. It's a question of how much money you want to, you know, spend on the town engineer to do something that's kind of elementary.
Yep, I think that answers the question.
So what I take out of that is Mark's comfortable overseeing this?
Yes, I am.
And as far as the drainage, that was a topic that was discussed. And like Mark said, I mean, that's within the scope of improving the road. And so at the time, and I don't know if this is still the plan, but at the time, Mr. Dibb was in conversations with an engineer at the University of New Hampshire to work with some students on, you know, a full-blown engineering design for the project, kind of as a capstone project for them. He'd still be paying for the work to be done. But plans will be designed for Mark to review, and the contractor, you know, will be coordinating with, would be coordinating with Mark, you know, to monitor the construction activities. So it sounds like if we can collect some information about a possible bond or other protection and a conversation with the attorney, then we can revisit this and have more information available to the board to make a decision.
Select person, air?
I'll make a motion table, do we have a set of plans?
Hold on a second. Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, if I might interject, a very big part of this project is the selection, the choice of the right material. We're finding on a lot of different roads in town that the problems that are generated that we're dealing with now were because of selection of the wrong material. Just because it was nice and smooth and easier to work with, it doesn't react well with water, and there's just, there's no strength to it. So a very big key element of this is the choice of the material.
Okay. So the items that we have for Mr. Dibb are a scope and a plan, controlling the water and drainage through that plan, working directly with Mark to validate and approve the plan, and ensuring that there is a bond in place for the project and it has been reviewed from a legal end for us. Is everyone okay with those items?
I am, Madam Chair. I mean, Mr. Chairman's... I was working hard at that, I'm sorry.
And Chair Nap, if I would, I think, I think probably the keystone question for the board, if the board's willing to decide tonight, would be about the width. Mr. Dibbs made it clear that he doesn't, he's not interested in the cost associated with upgrading the road 20 feet wide. That would price him out of the project. And so I think it's reasonable to ask for some additional information, but I'd hate to have this resident, you know, do a lot more work or have a lot more work done if the select board isn't comfortable with the proposed width. And, you know, I think as far as plans, getting some more information. But again, you know, I think it's reasonable that the resident would want some confidence that the select board's comfortable with the conceptual before investing, you know, time and/or money.
Danan?
Yeah, it seems, on that question, it seems the road as it exists right now is 16 to 18 feet wide. I don't think that that particularly changes. If we do put in subdivision or another house further up the road, then that's a different story, that probably needs to come up to standard. But since it exists now at 16, 18 feet, I don't see that we're losing a lot with the other provisions we've talked about.
No, I would agree. I think we're gaining more than is being lost. And I think what we're asking is ask for a fair amount of the resident already just to make sure that we get to what we think is a sound and reasonable means to manage a less-than-stellar road.
Is that a consensus of the rest of the board as well, about the width?
How about I just ask for a voice opinion from each of the members? Select person, air?
Well, I have a comment. You can get 17 and a half foot fabric and six inches of spec gravel as an observationist and a contractor, I can make it work. My personal opinion. And then two, you only need 16 feet of travelway at 2%, and two-foot shoulders at 5%. It could be done.
The question is, are, but that's not the question, Dan. Are you okay with the fact that it is between 16 and 18 feet?
I have to go with, where I make an individual on one house, be 20 feet, and then consisting, I mean, I think you go with the 20 feet, 16 and two-foot shoulders.
You realize, Dan, that when you talk about an individual building a house is very different than an individual who already owns a house there.
I know, I'm just saying, I think we're, we should be consistent on our own, that's all I'm saying.
So yes or no?
No.
Thank you. Select person Bailey? You're muted, George.
I said you put me in a hard spot by asking that question because I feel that, you know, like, as I said earlier, the gentleman is offering us a service, but at the same time, I look at, I would have to go along with it, I'd go along with it, Andy. So I'm off my soapbox, go ahead.
Danan?
Yeah, I think, I agree with it. I think we either have a 16-foot bad road or a 16-foot good road.
Select person, Sakosha? You're muted, just so you know.
I agree with Dan said.
All right, so four to one in favor of supporting the idea of moving forward, allowing him to move forward pending the items noted prior.
Great, I'll work with the president.
Sorry, what was that, Jim? I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Is Mark going to be able to whittle the travel time down there?
To whittle the travel time down there? It might be a little faster for you, if that's what you're looking for.
Maybe he was asking if Mark could bill the travel time down there?
Hand, handle.
Oh, handle the travel time. You're really crazy, Jim.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, great, well, I have the information. I know that Mr. Dibbs stuck through the conversation. I don't know if you want to ask if he has any questions or I can follow up with him tomorrow, Andy?
No, I will gladly open it up to him since he's the resident offering to improve the road, if he would like to comment. Star six to unmute.
Well, this is Mr. Dibb, I'm pardoned by your decisions, and I will look forward to talking more with Connor soon.
Great.
And Mark.
Very good, thank you. Thank you for offering to do this to part of the road. I'm sure your neighbors will greatly appreciate it as well. All right.
Thank you.
We have a reverse involuntary lot merger for map 104 lots eight, nine, and 10. Any discussion from the board before making a motion to reverse the involuntary lot merger? Going once? Twice?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second the motion. Roll call, vote?
Air, I.
Bailey, I.
Man Shrek, I.
Sakosha, I.
And Nap, I. All right. Done. Next item, the expiration of the statewide mask mandate. So as most folks know, the statewide mask mandate expired on Friday, April 16th. We had taken no action regarding masks in the community or at town facilities. So, well, I guess I'll let Connor elaborate more on what he's looking for here.
Yeah, definitely. So certainly just a discussion item for the board. Like I said, like Andy had mentioned, the select board had previously taken no action following in lockstep with the decisions and recommendations at the state level. Obviously, masks are still recommended. You know, the mandate has been lifted, but remain recommended for all, even those who have been vaccinated. I talked with department heads about what they're experiencing in their departments, both with their employees and with staff. We're fortunate that a lot of the adjustments that we've made have been very successful in making both residents and employees feel comfortable having plexiglass separation and some of the other adjustments. The library trustees, as part of their operations plan, their reopening plan, continue to require masks for patrons of the library as a requirement of the facility. And the most department, department heads feel comfortable, you know, with no action from the board, that what's currently in place is enough. One consideration at the transfer station was to continue having a mask mandate through June 1st to, you know, promote the health and safety of the variety of residents and employees that visit that facility on a regular basis. So the only request for action from the board, certainly you're welcome to take any action you'd like, the only request for action is to require masks at the transfer station through June 1st.
Just FYI, FYI, the school board's also decided to keep a mask mandate for the school.
Well, I think it's for our own protection that we turn around and have mandate in all our town buildings until June 30th at least.
So...
I think the state's making a call. I think the state's making a call, and that's how I feel like we should follow what the state's doing because I don't think they would open it up if it was... because I don't think they would open it up if it was unsafe.
So.
You're an optimist.
That's correct.
Why we're four to five, right?
So here's my general thought on the matter. And you folks can chime in and tell. My general thought is, is right now, the majority of people who want to be vaccinated, who have started that process. And of course, I'm going to have to pause and pass off to Dan because all of a sudden my battery is flashing at me that life is going to end as I know it here. So I'll let select person air go while I plug in my laptop.
Firstly, we haven't took a stand yet. And then I go into a store, I put the mask on, I don't deal with people. So I think it's up to individuals and stuff. And I will agree with the governor and stuff. But for me to throw a mask on, it's not a big deal. Going to a store, interacting with public, I don't know. We haven't taken a stand yet, so why are we doing it now?
Bear with me here, I'm all right, I'm charging again, life is. Life is good as I know it. All right.
Doing a stand, Dan, by any means. And we were, we were very cautious before because, you know, everything was new. We didn't have any information on it at the time, so. Sorry about that.
I thought your vote wasn't going to be influenced.
Yeah, it sounds good at the time, so, yeah, that's what I had on that, Dan, sorry.
All right, so my, my general comment on it is, is that we are well under our way through the process of vaccinating folks. Folks will make the decision whether they want to be vaccinated or not want to be vaccinated. The way I look at it is, is our job here is to do what is in the best interest of the employees of the town in this case, and allow residents to make the decisions that they feel are appropriate. Based on the information that was provided, you're talking about a mask mandate at the facility for June 1st. If we were going to do that, I would make it so it is for, it would, it would be applicable to the staff at the transfer station with a recommendation that we ask people to wear masks, but it wouldn't necessarily be a mandate because there are folks who are, have not worn a mask this entire pandemic and probably are not going to wear one moving forward. I will tell you, my personal preference is, is I still wear one at work and I wear one, and I carry one with me for wherever I go. So I would, and my, my thought behind the June 1st date is if we're going to do it through June 1st, it allows for the fact that anybody who wants to be vaccinated will have had adequate time to receive both of their vaccinations and go through the two-week period that dictates them as fully vaccinated. And anyone that doesn't want to, at that point, it is their choice and they can carry on in life the way they want. Jim Sakosha?
Just to clear it up, so you're saying that, that through June 1st, have a preferred mask, not a, you know, required mask. So that way, because, you know, all people are different, which we have to take a look at everybody here. And, you know, like you said, most of those people who have been vaccinated already have done or are in the process now, and those who feel uncomfortable or feel like they like to wear a mask, you know, they totally can, but to require everybody have it preferred. And, you know, I think we, you know, it's an option. It's not like a, it's not a hard rule. So I think might get more, more honeybees with that one, my opinion.
What I, what I was stating was that it would be a mandate for staff through June 1st. It would be a recommendation for everyone else. Obviously, the only exception to that would be if somebody has a medical condition that deems that they can't wear a mask. And at that point, it's just stating they have it because you can't require proof of it anyway, so. Because now you're getting into a HIPAA issue. Danan?
No, I'm going, I'll wear my MD hat now. I think despite what the governor says, the MMWR suggests that there's an increase in the number of people that are infected. There's nowhere near herd immunity, even if all the people who've gotten their first shot get their second. Most, many of them are not getting their second ones. I think we ought to be a little more proactive to protect our employees as well as our citizens. Most people wear masks to prevent infecting others as opposed to protecting themselves from being infected. So I would, I would suggest a mandate at, at public facilities, or at the town facilities, rather.
I would like to, I would like to make a motion that Andy said that we'll have a mask mandate for the employees and then for the GP, general public, it will be preferred that they wear a mask, not mandate.
A recommendation to wear at town facilities?
Is that at all town facilities or just the transfer station?
I'll do all town facilities because, you know, it's all new.
What is, for one is fair for all.
The other departments didn't reach out, right? So I mean, are they, they good with it? Do we know?
Don't forget the library.
Yeah, so I, like I said, I consulted with all department heads and asked them about their staff and the staff interaction with the public. And so, you know, the fire department is very different from the town clerk. And I don't think, I personally don't think there's a one-size-fits-all solution for every department. The only department, so the library, like I said, the trustees, as part of their reopening plan, continue to require masks. The only department that felt masks would be beneficial to help not only the public, but staff feel more comfortable with the additional constraints that are in place was the transfer station. I see the fire chief has raised his hands. If you're interested in hearing from him, I think he probably has something he'd like to add.
He might, but I don't think we're done having our conversation yet, so.
That's okay, I was just making sure, you know.
Yep.
So I, I would, I would say for the whole town then. You know, it's, you know, I don't think another month is gonna, you know, another month is more time. But I see that as a, in my, my personal opinion, it's four weeks.
So I guess here's my other, the other piece that I look at at this. If you're following CDC guidance, is, is it talks about anytime you're in close proximity to any person of six foot or less? And there's a whole nother debate around the distance because once you start getting into enclosed spaces and things like that, six could be 60 for this, for the impact. So it all depends on numerous other factors. So someone, I guess if we're going to make it as a mandate for town facilities, the way I would look at it is I would probably put a caveat on it is when less than six feet from another individual are interacting with the general public. Does that make more sense or at least bring a little more clarity to it?
Mr. Chairman?
You can hang on a second because Danan had his hand up, so he would be next.
No. I was just going to say, having, having said what I said earlier, being outdoors probably doesn't need a mask. I think that's what some of the CDC is suggesting, some of their debate is suggesting. So if at the transfer station, that might be all right. Unfortunately, if people come into the inside and they are pretty close to each other. So I'm still a little, I'm still favor putting a little more pressure on people to wear masks.
Select person Bailey?
Thank you very much. I have to agree with Danan. You, we have the town hall, which is our most open space. We have people coming in every day to pay the registration or to re-register their vehicles. We have people coming around the other side there for back in the John's area back there. I mean, so far, we've been very fortunate on staff that have come down. But I just think that we should be mandatory where the public comes to us. We know what our people do, but we should turn around and at least ensure that they're protected by somebody else that walks in. You know, classic examples during voting. People come in and I mentioned that we had masks over there at the table for them to put on, those provided by Jim and the town. And what they said to me wasn't kiss me, so, you know. I just think we needed to look at protecting our own people and make it mandatory. Everybody seems to be the first, but I like June 30th. Thank you.
Select person Sakosha?
I think my hand was just up. I mean, I'm still sticking with my story. I mean, so, sorry, I got three keyboards. Yeah, I think if we add rules into it, it's just going to further complicate things. But I mean, I'm down to hear it out. I mean, we're four to five. It sounds like I'm probably on the lower side of things as far as my motion. So I don't know if there's a new motion and my hand won't go down, so.
Here I can lower it.
We have a phrase on everybody?
I don't know, I just lost, Jim, I got him back here. He's muted, Jim, you're muted. And can somebody unmute him? I can see him talking.
I know.
Unmute him. Can you unmute Jim? He was in, oh, there we go. Yeah, we can hear you now. So do you want to finish your thought?
Can't hear me, Dan?
I hear you now.
Yeah, so no, I just didn't know if there was anybody else that had a rebuttal to the, the motion I put in, so.
Okay. Is everyone all right with me asking for Chief Walker's?
We have a motion on the floor, we need to get a second for it.
No, we don't.
Well, I, I would like to retract that motion before, so that the board could, if the board is willing to listen to Chief Walker, I forgot about him and nobody else to say.
Rick, the floor is yours.
Hey, um, we've kind of followed the state mandate and when we're on the ambulance, our EMS protocols that require, because of being on the ambulance around sick people, we have to wear proper protection. For the most part, you want to consider the fact that you're going to have people coming in that will flat out refuse to wear a mask. And I, I'll just say this, I'm not going to throw somebody out of the fire station because they come in without a mask. You know, they're taxpayers, that we're providing a service to them. And while I don't totally disagree, we keep masks handy. And if a person comes in with a mask, we'll ask if they want to, if they want us to put a mask on, we absolutely will. And I have had more people tell me, well, if I don't have to wear a mask, I just assume not do it. But you still get a few that come in that don't have masks. And it's just, I'm not going to, I'm not going to be the police department or whatever. And it's not even the police, it's the attorney general has to deal with it. So I think that putting signs up, at least in the public safety building, I don't care what other departments do, when on the fire side of it, putting a sign on the door that says masks are strongly encouraged, and leave it at that. And I don't think it's fair to turn around and tell the employees that, you know, we got to wear a mask for 10 to 12 hours a day, I'm not going to do it. Especially this time of year where it's warm weather.
Thank you for the feedback, Rick.
And Chief Joy is interested in speaking, if you're willing to hear from him as well?
Absolutely.
Well, you said he was. You got unmuted yourself, George.
You there, George? Oh, he's unmuted.
Is he?
Oh, he was. No, maybe not.
He was in on his phone and his computer. Well, we'll let, let him work through that. I also see Marcia's hand as well.
Marcia, go ahead.
Hi, our, our office is a little bit different. And of course, you guys are aware, we have a situation now. And I just want to put it out there, we do work in close contact with people. And the reality is, as a municipality, we're responsible for protecting the most vulnerable of our employees. And when you work in a close situation, I would feel far more comfortable if we had the mask mandate. Initially, I had expressed a con or at least till the end of June. And I actually, I'd probably be more comfortable going a month longer. There are people out there still getting vaccinated and trying to do the right thing and have not, you know, hit hurt, hit that immunity yet. There are people that work for the, work in Barrington and have other conditions that, you know, make them more susceptible to infection and into other issues or any number of things. And I think it's really important that we worry about protecting our employees.
Thank you.
Chief Joy is with us now, I think.
I believe I'm with you now.
Yes.
Yes, double muted for my safety, my apologies. I will just echo what Chief Walker already said. We are still essentially suggesting masks to the public, but I'm in the same boat in that if somebody comes to the police department, I'm not going to turn them away because they don't want to wear a mask. Similarly, our staff is essentially separated enough inside the building that we've been able to go this entire time, working every day, without any cross-contamination internally, despite a positive earlier on. So I guess that's where I stand on the issue is basically the same as Rick.
So my, okay, hold on, I'll, Jim, then Dan air.
Uh, go Dan, because I was going to make a motion.
I was going to, just clarify your motion, I'll second it.
All right, hold on a second because I have commentary that I'd like to input. You guys are quick with the motions here, you're all a rapid draw tonight. My general thought is, is if we're, if we're not going to institute a mask mandate, then I believe we need to do, we need to have a means in place to protect the potentially vulnerable of our staff in a way that is suitable and adequate. And I don't believe a mask mandate necessarily solves that. But I think, you know, herd immunity is potentially years away. So when you start, so if you start looking at saying, okay, saying, okay, well, when we get to herd immunity, we're good, you could, we, we may, we may not be good for years from now or likely won't. So my, my thought is, is you protect the most vulnerable of your population and you allow folks to make decisions that are adequate and appropriate for them. Those, those I guess are my two cents. If you want to make a motion now, we can go for it if.
Yes, I do. So and just kind of to, to follow up on what you said. And so I don't think the governor, you, you know, we're not, the, the governor has to look at us as a whole and he has to think about us and what we're talking about right now. And obviously that's been dealt with at a higher level at the state and said, okay, we're, we're going to lift this. So obviously there's hierarchy above that shows that, hey, it's, it's going to be appropriate. This is a go. And I would like to make the motion that we have the, we drop the mask mandate, but we allow any department to have signage on their, their doors, entrances, wherever that masks are preferred, but not mandatory.
So essentially your motion is that you were, that, that we do not take action on the mask mandate. We just allow departments to post signage requesting the use of masks when they come in.
Correct, because if an employee feels uncomfortable or wants to show, hey, I'm just trying to, you know, do my part even more by wearing, by continuing on wearing a mask, that, that's a personal choice and it's also a personal choice being like, okay, do I get vaccinated, not vaccinated? You know, people have had time to, to schedule and you know, it, there's still time because I think it ends in what, May? I forget the actual physical date.
No, it's already currently expired.
For businesses?
Businesses are in the same boat. It is, it is the preference of the business.
Okay, because I heard, all right, so.
Yeah, Jim's right.
Well, well, I understand you're talking. You guys are talking about the universal orders or what the, the, what I'm trying to think of the name of the term for it right now.
Safer at Home 2.0 was the reopening guidelines for businesses, which required certain separation for restaurants and mask requirements. And that did not expire at the same time as the statewide mask mandate. I also forget the specific date, but it, it was after.
It expires on May 7th, but there was never a mask stamp mandate with the Safer at Home 2.0. It's specifically noted in there that it is that there was no enforcement and it really was a recommendation on it.
Yeah, and I just think also it would be probably what nobody looks at is probably a huge emotional boost for the staff to, to see the, the expressions and the smiles and the emotions on people's faces. But to go back, circle back, my motion is to do no action on the mask mandate with allowing each department to express that masks are preferred, but not required.
So I have a motion by Jim Secoshia, second by Dan Air. We have a roll call vote.
Aye, aye.
Bailey, no.
Mantrick, no.
Secoshia.
And Nap, no. So let's open this back up for discussion. I fully support the idea of allowing people to make their own decision. I also want to make sure that we do what is in the best interest of our employees. And allowing them to where allowing them to, obviously them wearing a mask at their preference is their best decision or is their decision. The component that we have got to work through is how do we handle special cases where we protect any vulnerable employees of the town? Or do we defer that to Connor at that point?
I honestly think that, you know, if, if we're going to do this is that we, as a select board tonight, choose a day either whether it be June 1st, June 30th, but come back in two weeks and have Connor reach out to all the department heads. And then each department can, they can all vote in their own department, go, okay, is everybody for mask or everybody, you know, don't want to wear masks such as, you know, at the police department. And as Rick said, you know, his guys are humping around and, you know, do they need an extra, you know, mask around their face when they're, you know, on calls, doing gear, they're already following the state protocol. But if we have a list of all the departments and what they want, then that way we can get a list going. And then that way we'll have to get it out on Facebook and on the webpage. But then that way, you know, each department can control their own.
So I'll, I'll be candid. I'm, I'm not really necessarily disagreeing with what your motion was, Jim, or what, what Dan had seconded. What my concern is, is that we, is that we, we haven't had, we haven't had enough meaningful conversation around how do we take care of the folks that most need to be cared for? Or have a concern?
Yeah. And, and Andy, if, if you'll allow me, when the pandemic first was onset, you'll remember that the governor's mask mandate wasn't put into place until November, I believe. And so it was important to me, and I know it was important to the select board, that we, we try to make sure that the pandemic did not interrupt services to residents or that interruption was minimized as much as possible. And so the first step of that process for me was to go around to all department heads and employees and ask what they needed to feel comfortable in their spaces. Obviously the fire department is different than the tax office is different than the planning office, building office, et cetera. And so, you know, some offices were comfortable with the separation that they had to be able to continue operating. The town clerk, tax office, perfect examples. They already had Plexiglas separation. Police department, same thing. They've got a separation, a lobby separation for staff. We also considered and implemented at the time some protocols where, you know, the planning and building office doors were locked so that if somebody came to visit those offices and they weren't wearing a mask, they could be asked if, if the services that they're looking for could be accomplished electronically over the phone, through email, et cetera, with Dropbox and whatnot. We also brought in some temporary Plexiglas separation. And so, you know, I think knowing, you know, now with the statewide mask mandate in place, I, I think it would be perfectly appropriate, like you were suggesting, to, to do the separate than the conversation about, hey, you know, select board instituting a mandate at the select board level. Go through an additional review like we did early on with each employee and supervisor about the space that they have and the services that they're providing and make sure that those protections are in place that make those employees feel comfortable in their workspace. Knowing that there's not a statewide mask mandate and depending on what other action, if any of the select board chooses to do. But regardless, we'll make every effort to make sure that employees are comfortable in their workspace and have the tools to do their job.
Okay. I, I also look at, I, I mean, I look at the, not only the state numbers, but the Stratford County numbers and I don't know if anyone else follows them, but if you look, we are actually lower now than where we were in November, when the mask mandate went into place. Like if you look at the number of cases, it is currently lower than where it was at that point in time. Although Stratford County, I will say, has had a recent uptick and Barrington specifically has been, been impacted. George, then Jim, and then it was Dan, and I believe.
Thank you very much. You know, we look at all of the reasons why we shouldn't have it. I'd just like to give you something for thought and that is some of what Jim has said and some of what Connor has said is a sign on the door that says, we would prefer that you wear a mask while conducting business in the town. Something that simple, it takes care of what the, the two chiefs have said, says what Jim has said, it takes some of what Daniel has said, but is, you know, we, we have so many people out there from different walks of life, some that have traveled, some that haven't. And, you know, our main cause is to protect our employees. And so if they want to wear it, fine. If not, fine. And when their customers come in, they can either wear it or not, but just the fact that we prefer to have a mask worn while conducting business with the town, period. I mean, it's, it's easy. Thank you.
Dan?
Yeah, I, I think that's a very good point about the numbers being lower now than they were in November. That suggests to me that the mask mandate really worked, worked pretty well. And if we stop it too soon, then we're going to have those numbers start going up again.
Yep. I, I appreciate it. It would be a good conversation to have over a, I think a frosty drink at some point, because with vaccination, I think there'd be a whole lot of conversation around that. So select person Secoshia, did you have something more to add?
No.
So I will recognize that I see Rick's hand raised, but we have also given everybody a opportunity, all of the department heads an opportunity to speak at this point. So I'm, I'm comfortable with, I think where everyone's position is. So how would you folks like to proceed with a motion?
I, I would like to proceed that. I'm going to, I'm going to put my same motion out there, prefer mask everywhere.
With a recommendation.
I don't know. Recommendation to wear masks because it's not our call. We're not the scientists. You know, this has been done at, at a higher level than us than, you know, what we see on whatever news channels that, that we watch. That's just how I feel. So.
All right, there's a first and a second. So I, I think we've, we've thoroughly examined the idea that we believe masks are beneficial and that we recommend that folks wear them, but we're not looking to mandate that they be put in place for everyone, but we strongly recommend and advise that they be worn.
Would you review the motion again, please, Mr. Chairman?
So the motion is to allow the executive order that has expired on masks to remain with a a motion that masks will be a recommendation for departments, employees and the general public who enter the space.
Thank you. Very good motion.
Who enter municipal space.
Does that been second?
Dan seconded that, yes.
I'd like to move the motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, roll call vote.
Aye, aye.
Bailey, aye?
Mantrick, still votes no.
Secoshia.
Right. And I'll vote aye on this since there's more clarity to it. Good conversation, everyone.
Not a bad compromise. I'll, I'll say that.
Yeah, it, it doesn't, like I said, this doesn't always mean we all get along, but it's a, a great conversation. And, and I strongly encourage if the, if any of the department heads have a concern about it, please reach out to Connor. Don't hesitate to reach out to me there. You know, we want to make sure that you feel that you're heard and know that we care about your safety and wellbeing. It is of paramount importance to us. So an item that I would like to add under new business, if the board is amenable to hearing me out, with the governor's expiration of executive orders and I would like to ask Connor to further investigate what the impact of this is for our 91A provisions, because everything was done under the executive order, but now that all the executive orders or the majority of the executive orders have expired, not expiring here, you're.
No, no, the, the executive order, number 12, I believe, that authorizes the remote meetings as we've been meeting remains in place.
And that's in place through the end of the year. Is that correct?
No, he has to keep extending it because it's pursuant to the, it's an emergency order pursuant to the state of emergency. And he has to renew that, I believe, every three months. But there's pending action. The Senate passed a bill to cement those requirement or those allowances in state statute for a predetermined amount of time and the House will be reviewing that bill that passed the Senate forthcoming. But yes, absolutely. I will make sure that the town continues to operate consistent with those statutes.
Right. I just want to make sure we remain in compliance with the standards and statutes. Thank you. I appreciate that, Connor.
No problem.
All right, moving on to select persons reports. I know you have your hand up, Dan, but I figure since you're first, you can discuss it in your select person's report.
No, within three months, I'd like to see us get back to meeting himself when things are ready. It's up. This remote stuff is limiting a lot of taxpayers for public input and stuff. So at some point, I'd like to get back to normal when the time is right and healthy for everyone. My personal opinion. Select report. We might hear Conservation, I met with them and we're going to hear about Daniel Carter and the mill foil on Ayers Lake. And I thought that it was in the right way, but all that land is totally owned by Camp Fireside. So they might approach us someday. I don't know if they will, FYI. And then there's one old monitor and basics off. And then there's been no towns, lands meeting last week. But there is a lot of activity going on with the chairman. He's up. He's a very busy boy. And it's all positive. Thank you.
All right. Select person Bailey?
Thank you. I have two comments, one comment and would we please adjust the order on our select persons reports and concerns? If we can get that taken care of. Now my, my piece is on the CBA. We had six cases come before us the other night. Five, five cases for variants, one case for an equitable waiver. And equitable waiver and for the variances were done and we had one continuance for a variance.
Anything from the library commission?
No, the, that was given off at the last time. They're, they're 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 trying to figure out what they want to do as far as a few other programs that they have. And so that's still, hasn't been a vote taken on it. They're still under discussion to do things, whether it's for the live, for the library and how they want to move forward. So there were some issues on there for continuance and or for the building project of what they all worked on. And I did, they don't know what they're going to do with the monies or what have you. So I, I have no idea where that's at. And there's another meeting coming up, which I'll attend and get back to the report. And my report that I submit to you will be on that when it comes up so that at least you get some verbiage from me on that and we'll see what happens and but they haven't made up their mind yet as to. And but they haven't uh, made up their mind yet as to what they're gonna do and not do. I'm not trying to be hiding the problem, but but there's nothing really there to come up with yet. Oh, all the officers, all the officers were reelected, if that's any help, but that's it.
Thank you. Danan?
Yeah, um, I went to school board meeting on the 22nd last Tuesday. Um, they did vote on the calendar, the students' last day will be an early dismissal on Friday, the 18th of June. Uh, the teachers are coming back for three more days the next week uh, to complete their sign out checkout procedures and uh, per their contract. Um, the Barrington and Oyster River had their second COVID vaccine clinic uh, a week ago Monday. Uh, I believe our rec department was included in that group. I don't know how many of them attended.
Yes.
Yeah, there are two vacancies for next year right now. Um, and they're going to continue to have in masks where in school, they'll continue uh, wearing masks. There is uh, supposedly the Athletic Association, New Hampshire Athletic Association is going to come up with uh, possible new guidelines on the 9th of May for outdoor uh, participation, and they're going to look at that. Um, let's see what, oh, um, there's, there will be summer school programs, about 25% or about 230 kids will probably be participating in that. Um, the, my other committees, the ABC and the uh, transfer station uh, did not meet. Although there are two, still two slots open for ABC uh, membership. That's my report. Thank you.
All right, um, the planning board met um, Tuesday, April 20th. Uh, there was a review, uh, request for continuance for um, one of them, or for uh, actually, I believe it was two of them, there was a quest, request for continuance on. And uh, the third one was the approval of the Barrington Shores um, expansion plan pending a couple little like, I needed to do, so that was everything. And we reviewed the um, the approval of the um, issuance of a building permit on Flower Drive, which we all voted on tonight. Um, cases before the board on May 4th, there is a kind of a collection of materials here. If anybody's really interested, I go through it, but I don't think anybody has that much desire to hear about all that. So I'll spare you the aggravation and the small forest of paperwork I have here in the office. Um, the uh, nothing new on the technology committee or the building committee. I know at the last one, I had asked Connor if he had an update for us on that, but um, that was the extent of where that was. So, select person Sikosha?
Well, we heard what's going on at the rec department um, earlier, so uh, nothing too much uh, more than that.
All right. So um, are we in the final public comment? And if anybody would like to speak, please either raise your hand or um, star six to unmute.
See, it didn't come through on my side. Um, Andy, I did send out an update to the building committee, um, but you didn't get it because you're not on the committee anymore.
You're right.
That went to Dan and George. Um, but for any community members um, interested in the most up to date information, um, you can always find that at barrington.nh.gov forward slash Town Hall, um, chronic chronological listing. We're inching closer towards the permit approval um, for the larger subdivision. Um, we're lining up um, grant opportunities that will be available um, for the emergency operations center um, and other aspects of the project. Um, and I think that's all I provided an update on. Um, but yeah, so sorry, Andy, I should have sent it to you as well, but um, but no, I I try to do as I'm told. Um.
You do, I I appreciate all the hard work you and every other town employee puts in, so thank you for all of that.
Wow, I walked headfirst into that pat on the back. That was nice.
Go ahead, Jim.
So um, I wanted to say sorry to uh, Chief Joy as he lost his uh, service dog. That was um, a former Barrington service dog, Gypsy. Um, she passed away last Thursday. So I just wanted to uh, send my condolences.
Great. Yep, ditto. All right, um, I will close public comments since it seems to just be the board that has comments, so. Uh, no, no need to enter non-public this evening.
I have none.
All right.
I mostly adjourn.
I I will second that motion. Roll call?
Stain.
Bailey, I.
Ed Shrek, I.
Sikosha.
And Nap, I. Everyone have a great evening and thank you again for all your time, effort, and dedication to the town of Barrington.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.